Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Thank you.
Mr. Say would you please call the role?
Mr. Dexter Armstead is absent. Mrs. Kristen Chastain. Mr. Michael Cheatham is absent. Mr. Kyle Flanagan.
Here.
Mr. Jason McCray. Mr. Keith Mills.
Here.
Mr. Richard Olivo. Dr. Chrissy Oakwin. President Louis Kent.
I need to motion approve the general one addition Lake Shore. Lake Shore Drive, one addition.
So move.
Mr. McCray.
Second.
Second by Mr. Oliver. Any discussion? Question from the audience. In that all in favor?
Ah.
And opposed? Motion carried. On our whole business, adopting minutes from the September fifteenth, twenty twenty five regular meeting. Everyone read them.
Make a motion.
With by Mr. Mill.
Second.
Thinking about Dr. Oakwin. Any discussion? Question from the audience. In that all in favor?
Ah.
And opposed? Motion carried. New business. Request for return of opioids funding, Mr. Ronde Terrence. State your name, please.
Ladies, Ronde Terrence, East Feliciana Parish, Alphabell, Wisconsin. I'm here tonight on behalf of the council as if you all would consider the return of the opioid funds. As most of you know, we were given the fund by the police group last year. The new parish manager came on board and felt like there was a conflict of interest because the person that was going to administer the funds as the case manager was a board member. She was an unpaid board member, but she was a board member. And he felt like there was a conflict of interest. There was no other person at that time available with the drug council or that we felt comfortable with to manage these funds. Because I was not going to be available for oversight and neither was our director at that time. We have brought on board Dr. Thomas. Dr. Thomas has been with us probably the ten years. We've had federal funding. We've been in the parish for fifteen years, but she's been with us for ten years. She was the person that originally got us a federal funding. And she's come back on board. She is on board at the present time as a consultant. So there won't be a conflict of interest. She's not a board member. She's not part of the membership. We hired her as a consultant when we need her. The one thing I do want to let you all know is that we have applied for additional federal funds. We should know if we get those funds by the end of the year. And if we do, Dr. Thomas will come on board as the director of that grant. But at the present time, she is, as I stated earlier, not a board member. Not part of the membership, not a paid employee. She oversee the opioid funds. If it turns out we do get the funding, she will have people in place that the drug council feels confident will be able to carry through with. What I've attached is the basic treatment program, which is the same one that was submitted to you all last year. And a tentative budget is also submitted and Dr. Thomas is presenting. Any questions?
As you know, we have no one to administer that money right now. And I think we need to go ahead and do something with it. So what's the pleasure to do? Take an advisement and come back.
I'd like to take it under. I make a motion to take it under advisement.
Second.
Any discussion, more questions? We're not going to make a decision on that tonight. We're going to take an advisement and get back with you on that.
Anybody, anytime anyone on the jury has any questions, please just give it to me.
Come on, you go in to administer that money. It just settled there.
Dr. Thomas.
Please speak, state your name, please.
My name is Dr. Deborah Thomas. And I have acquired funds for the drug council and did various activities in the community. We were the first organization in Louisiana to place the prescription drop boxes and replace them in different communities here in East Feliciana Parish. The drug tree communities were involved, various entities within the community. And right now, we're waiting to hear from funding. They just called me back like at the beginning of the year, the fight for funding for the BS. BS. Yeah, BS project for success grant. And that's through SAMSS, Substituting Mental Health Services. And I would just like to say that opioids is a very severe problem in our communities. And anything that East Feliciana can do to kind of warrant it, address it, and get the people who are addicted the help that they need, it would be to the benefit of the community as a whole. Because people who are on drugs and people who have substance abuse and substance misuse problems have a very severe impact on communities and cost communities a lot of money to actually address those issues. So since they've called me back, I'm willing to go ahead and address the program that was written as it was written and make, you know, various changes as needed. And if you all have any suggestions as far as how we may be able to or how you think that we should adjust the program, we're here to answer any questions, so.
I totally agree with you. The first thing we want to do with drug people is put them in prison. No, they need to be treated. It's a stigma. I totally agree with you. It costs the race, it's not the house.
And it's a hard, it's a hard issue.
It is, very hard.
Because it takes more than just one, one time in treatment. It takes repeated treatment to actually address those issues with people who are addicted. Because addiction don't just happen overnight, so it's not going to be treated overnight. So, thank you all.
What second? Any question? Question? You have a question with Dr. Thomas? If you do. If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, approve what advertisement to fill. Upcoming vacancy on the Auburn Regional Library Board.
I make a motion, we all advertise.
Second by Mr. McCray. Any discussion? Question from the audience. In all in favor? And opposed? And opposed, motion carried. Approve final plat for Duncan Ridge. Jeff Williams, CBO.
Jeff Williams, CBO, coming tonight to try to get the approval of the final plat. We have been back and forth for a long time with this one. Mr. Morrow and his crew has been, in my opinion, very generous and asked and done everything that the jury and us as an office has asked them to do. So that's what I'm coming to y'all tonight to try to get that sound off on and get done.
We know Jeff, I've been out there a number of times also. He did everything with the extra. So what's the pleasure to do?
I have a question. Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Rich. Go ahead.
That's in my district. We followed it. So there's no confusion when we bring. I mean, they've done everything. I've been out there just about every meet. And they've done what they supposed to do. But when it comes time for voting, I won't abstain from voting because I didn't vote for it in the beginning. The people upstream from it is concerned about it. But it's done, it's completed, it's time to let the man go on with his business. But I just wanted to clarify that.
That's it about every day, so.
With Jeff, has everything been done?
Absolutely, yes, sir. We've got the bond. They did the sealing of the road. They put the words on the map that we've asked them to do. I mean, literally, they've done everything we asked them to do.
Give us that.
And I was there when they courted at six, but a twelve inch on base. And he leave it right there. So there, if everybody else's road is actually as good as theirs, we will have good roads.
What about the water issue they were having?
So DOT, if you don't mind, I'll take that. DOTD has obviously addressed a lot of the issues down Highway nine sixty four. And I've talked to Mr. Gary Shotwell, and he said that seems. Now, obviously, we hadn't had a torrential rain, five or six inches. But what they did downstream has obviously helped tremendously. But as far as the engineer plans that they submitted, they've done everything we've asked them to do. Whether culvert sizes, everything.
So they've met, they've met everything?
Everything, we did everything.
So are you saying that a lot of the original problems were not only their fault? It was part of the downstream?
I'm not an engineer. I'm just telling you what the neighbors have told me, you know, that it obviously has helped.
Their problem there, I'm not the engineer and I'm not the MTD. But that water's taking a hard ninety and ninety again into a natural stream that's clogged up. Further down, they've pleaded it out. Talked to the landowner adjacent to it to take out a bridge or cover it to help as best possible. But they have done what they.
They were saying with the extra, yeah. Some motion.
I'll make the motion if everything's been complied with, they've done everything they're supposed to do. I make the motion to go ahead and then accept the plat.
Second.
Any more discussion? Question from the audience. In that all in favor?
Ah.
What extension? Mr. Oliver.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Next discussion of upcoming election for rededication of health unit meetings. Your confidence.
Yes, sir, thank you. Just wanted to please encourage everyone to vote in the upcoming election. And as a juror, I would appreciate it if you voted in favor of the rededication that's coming up. We're looking at some potential shortfalls if not. And it would affect payer services such as your clerk of court, your judge, district attorney.
Council, council.
Yes, and I could go on and on. There's quite a laundry list of agencies and entities. But just would encourage that you would vote in favor of it. And if there's anybody else that'd like to say anything, please do so.
I want people realize it's not a new tax. And if it don't pass, the tax still going to be there. Yes, the rededication that was renewed two years ago is a ten year tax for the health unit. All we do is rededicate some funds from the health unit to the general fund to help show up the general fund. Some kind of way, it was a fifty-fifty split, but some kind of way was not intended to grow in greed. If we had it, it would went the other way, not instead to general fund, instead of growing greed. It got screwed up and put it on the ballot coming for the people.
And we'd like to also emphasize that it was no, I mean, some people had the wrong perception. There was some misallocation of funds. That is false. That is not true. Just want to put that out there.
And East Feliciana Parish is doing the same thing. They're trying to rededicate some of their mosquito bait, some of the library money to their general fund. The general fund pays, that's about everything that comes through this jury. Everything that comes through the general fund.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Oliver.
Exactly what you said. The way it's going on the ballot, if you had, if people just read it right now, it probably get voted down.
Because they think it's a new tax.
You got to pass it on that the tax is going to be there on Sunday morning. Whether this fails or not, if passes or fails, it's still going to be there.
Not increase.
No, no increase at all.
No new taxes, but it's, you know, it's just a percentage change. And it's also not in the ballot about percentages.
No.
You know, it just says it can be used.
That's right.
And so I, I, I mean, I, I've been, I'm working it myself in my area. I mean, I mean, I got tore up Sunday at a restaurant. People just, you know, don't understand. And so I'm asking the people out there that I'm not for any new taxes, but I am for this for the parents. So I'm asking you, please, vote yes Saturday.
Any question from the audience? And then we're going to move on. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, Lake Shore, Mr. Ron Smith. There was addition. State your name, please.
My name is Ron Smith, and this is Mr. Terry Boozwag. We're both on the board of the HOA and the subdivision of Highland Lake Shore. Would you pass that, pass those out? We have, this is not the only problem, nuisance problem and blighted problem we have out at the, out at the subdivision. But I'd like to, after y'all look at this property, I'd like for y'all to think about whether you would like to live next door to this property right here. I've personally seen rats and cats and dogs and snakes and possums and the little kids and drug heads using this crackhead, using this place as a, as a crack house. I brought it up to the board. I brought it up to the, to the inspectors. All I get is crickets. I get nothing. I want to get something done. The only reason I have this job is because nobody else wants it. I'm seventy-five years old. I'm old and I'm tired. And I'd like to get something done before I sail off into the sunset. So if y'all will just look at it and give, you know, Jason has worked with me. He's a personal friend of mine, and we'd like to get something done about it. I, I, I want, I want to, I showed Sam this already. And we just need to get something done. That's not the, that's not the only one that's a problem without. We got several houses out here that's dilapidated. People die and they get, you know, the kids get the property or whatever, and they don't do anything about it. This is small change for you people, but this big deal for us.
That will change Mr. Smith on the school bus. I agree with you saying.
School bus, school bus. I was going to say before I left, just two words, school bus.
Yeah, I come through there, yes, I go to school bus a number of times.
Yeah. So please, please consider, I don't, instead of throwing a lighter knot on it, on the porch, I'd rather do it the right way. And believe me, if anything happens after I say this, y'all going to come see me, but it ain't me, okay?
Yeah, Mr. Smith, we have a process, there'll be going through, we follow nuisance without disrespect. He'll come out there and investigate.
Now, thank you for coming in person and presenting it yourself. And we'll take the ball and go with it from here.
I sure hope so, because I'm tired of fighting it by myself.
If you clear the nuisance, then we'll try to address the problem as quick as possible.
Okay, we haven't, okay, that's it.
Is there an address to that property?
You can't even find the mailbox. I'm sure the tax assessor has the property.
You can get it from there.
Yeah, get it from there. It's on West Lake Shore.
Oh, yeah, I've passed numerous times, but.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, so. Get this done, and I've got some more right behind it. So you're used to seeing my face. And Terry's going to take over for me when I, when I sail off, and so you'll be seeing him.
Yes, sir.
He's a lot tougher than I am. Thank y'all.
Want to say something?
No, well, no, all that I know is there's a couple of culverts that needed attention also. School bus.
Yes, I, I was school bus, yeah.
We'll come back with some, with some addresses that will make it a lot easier to recognize.
Thank y'all for coming. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Appreciate it, Tom.
All right.
Okay, let's move on. Committee is there for, exempt committee? I don't have anything. Pointeau committee? Dr. Chris Oakwin.
Okay, I have recommendations to approve the GPS vehicle traffic policy. You have this. We met, we discussed this. This is just pretty basic. You take a second or two to read it. It gives purpose, talks about that monitors vehicle speed, vehicle idling, seatbelt usage, if our vehicles are set up for seatbelt monitoring. Device tampering, unauthorized use. Responsibility is in there. Who's going to be responsible for monitoring it? Enforcement, and that might be where people are most concerned. Any violation within the conditions of this policy may result in disciplinary action up to and including termination. Conclusion, all East Feliciana Parish employees who operate a parish vehicle should receive a copy of this policy. Be required to sign and date it. The executed policy should be placed in the employee's personnel file. Any questions you have may have regarding this policy may be directed to your department. So we had one policy, and this is really just a little more because the GPS monitors more now than it did.
And every piece of equipment the parish have have GPS on. From tractors and vehicles, everything has GPS. So what's the deal?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Any more discussion? Question from the audience. In all in favor? And opposed? Motion carried. Anything else to ask?
No, I have nothing else.
First committee, Mr. Kyle Finnegan.
Yes, sir. I have three items. Item A is a motion to approve monthly invoices.
Second.
Any more discussion? Question from the audience. In all in favor? And opposed? Motion carried.
Item B is a recommendation to adopt asset policies and procedures. And if you look in your binder, I can't speak for the rest of you, but I believe they're in reverse order in your binder, at least they are in mine. So the second one you're going to look at would be the asset policies and procedures. I just need a motion for acceptance of that.
With Mr. Oliver.
My second.
Second by Mr. Mill. Any discussion? Question from the audience. In all in favor? And opposed? Motion carried.
Final item is item C, a recommendation to adopt grant code policy. If you flip back to the previous, it is a one-page document. It's on the backside of that single page.
I'll make that motion.
Question from the deputy.
A second.
Same by Mrs. Chastain. Any question?
Is this something new or just, we just?
We're just adopting this to have this on file. Ms. Harris, is there anything you want to tell them about this, about how it came about?
So we had an audit here recently, and there are some things that we need to have in place with, is that FEMA? Go set. And also a recommendation of your grant administrators. And this grant accounting policy is also, the financial advisors did see this, and they are fine with that as well. So we just want to make sure that we're covering everything. Some of our policies are outdated. So we'll probably eventually touch bases on all of them. It's a kind of update, but we're pretty much going with what we have to get done first.
Any more question? New product?
Okay.
Any question from the audience? What's the pleasure to do?
Yeah, motion to second.
Yes, sir.
Come on in favor? And opposed? Motion carried. Anything else to do?
No, sir, that's it. Thank you.
Public work and equipment, Mr. Jason McCray.
Okay, I just want to ask Mr. Hill, have we completed the bridge?
On lost way?
Yes, sir, we just got to finish the inspection and get the engineers to on there.
Okay.
So we have a little permission to open that.
And the status on the tractors?
We have two that's running, we're waiting for the next one.
And what about the new one?
The new one, the new, the new one came in this month. They appointed the builder, so we should be ready for the next one.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Hill.
Can I, I say now, I'm going to. Jason, you, you pointed out that I was for keeping the zipper. But it's very evident we're not going to use the zipper. So we need to, I mean, I would think that we would maybe go towards surplus and yet.
Well, we had discussed that at a public work meeting, and he requested and asked that we keep it with something, a couple of jobs that he wanted to get done with it before we get rid of.
Okay, well, I mean, I just, if we ain't going to use it, it needs to go.
Anything else, Mr. McCray?
That's it, Mr. Hill.
Ben in Providence, Mr. Dick Armstrong.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to mention that they had the McMahon's bash on Saturday, and everything was a success. Everything that we put in, they put in place that we had in place here, the guidelines and all, man, they followed to a T. And I was there.
They were rail parked and everything out there.
Exactly. We talked about the parking situation. I talked with Mr. King Jr. We talked about how they was going when people pull in, once they establish the parking. And everybody was going to just kind of follow suit. And man, they did. They didn't have, and they had to go back out there and tell them folks, no, don't park here, don't park there. And at the end, guys are picking up trash, and one of the guys was kind of over there, took all the trash and bags and put it outside, they fenced in a nice lit roof pile. So I was, I would like to say that was a tremendous follow of the rules, everything went real well. Everybody had a great time, and I was there. I got there about twelve, didn't leave until everything shut down at six and eight. They right on six, you know, people still tricking around, picking stuff up. You got to give them time to get stuff out. But at six o'clock, like we said, the music stopped. People start picking up stuff, was talking, was still having a good time. But yet, you can still see people gathering their things. So within about thirty to forty-five minutes, everybody was cleaning up. And a lot of folks had started leaving before then, you know. So, but anyways, long story short, everything works well with the policy and procedures we had in place, and it works good. And I come back when we have public comments, so. But anyways, Mr. President, that's all I have. I do need to get with Ms. Yumisha because we hadn't, need to have a, my, a meeting, which we hadn't had in a while. So I get with her on it a little bit later.
I want to compliment you on the procedures of those parks.
Thank you. They work.
They work.
They work.
It was good. Look like they had it.
We are, we are a country of rules and laws. We should obey them. You got to have them. I'm going to compliment you on a good deal.
And I appreciate it. And like I say, and everything, when people see that and they know that's in place, it's, you usually don't have any problems.
Having a problem.
Not at all, you know. So, but it was well organized.
Any more question from Mr. Armstrong? And then we're going to move on. Thank you, Mr. Armstrong.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to straighten down the trajectory report.
I have a few reminders, maybe updates, and then I'll let Mr. Jeff and Mr. Hill let you know if they have anything from their departments. First, I want to remind you all of the Region Six meeting, October fifteenth in Livingston Parish. We also have provision, prevention on the go, October twenty-eighth at the health unit that's screening for colorectal cancer and breast cancer. I wanted to give you all two, and thank you to Mr. Roushawn and Mr. Sam and the waterworks staff. Mr. Lewis and myself went over, I think, a couple of months ago when we received notice about the L-GAP grants. There were two that was open for waterworks, so we couldn't apply or couldn't get another or apply, and so one of them were closed out. There was six months. And well, before, I think it would be maybe six months in December, we were ready to close out. So Mr. Lewis and myself, this week, we're going to get together to make sure everything is sent in so that we'll close out the L-GAP grant. And if you all, to those of you who don't remember the L-GAP grant, the application that was done is for some work for some showers and different things over at DPW for disasters or when they have to stay overnight for some kind of disaster or something. Also, at our last meeting, Representative Adams was here and there, and he mentioned during public comments about the capital outlay funds. So I have spoke with him since that, and I was able to go into the system. There looks like something was started for some work to be done at the courthouse with some sprinklers by our past parish manager. That's something that you all won't need to do because Mr. Jeff has been working on that. You all did approve with ARPA funds, getting sprinklers at the courthouse. And we're, he'll give you an update on where we are with that. But for the next meeting, there's a deadline of November, so I just kind of want you to think. And I think the finance committee may be meeting, but I would like to know what you would like to apply for. How would you like to spend the capital outlay fund so we can go ahead and meet the deadline to do the application for that? The accounting clerk application deadline was September the twenty-ninth. I think there's about nine applications. So we are gonna, as soon as we can, start the interview process. We'll keep you updated on what's going on with that. Hopefully, we can get someone or a recommendation to the jury soon to get someone hired. But that's where we are with that. The new payroll system update, we had a lot of documentation. Some of the ladies did work on Friday because there was a deadline to have information in on Friday. As you know, the old system, well, we have QuickBooks, that's the only, we're only still doing work in the payroll system. But you all did approve outsourcing payroll. There's a. There's a lot of information that the, the new company will need from this office in order to go live. And they're hoping to go live in November, around the middle of November, because QuickBooks will expire, so you don't have to renew that. So, the ladies and myself will be working hard to get all of that information to them and it's quite a, a good bit of information. I know you all have received some phone calls about birth dates or different things, that's because it all has to be in the system. And anyone who would like to go to direct deposit, just let, let Ms. Julie know and we can get you set up for direct deposit. Right now, we're advertising for the engineer, for a parish engineer or company. And the deadline is October thirteenth for that. I think that may be about it unless you have any questions for me.
You said you're gonna let the department head speak, I'm gonna speak to Mr. Williams about the sprinkler system at the courthouse. I've been getting a lot of phone calls about the system, I heard it, it was just gone, the system is gone. I think the whole system is completely, it's been listed at the courthouse. Go with Mr. Williams.
All right, the sprinkler system at the courthouse, it hasn't worked in quite some time. Obviously, the existing pipe that's about three to four inches deep is, is obviously rotted and, and it's in very bad shape. The jury has allotted a certain amount of money aside for that irrigation system. It's gonna cost about four thousand dollars more than what y'all allotted.
We allotted twenty thousand.
Correct. So, and this is for a whole new system, this is for tracer wire going throughout the system, so that way, there won't be, you know, we won't have, where, where is, where's the pipe located, right? I mean, you're having state-of-the-art equipment. Honestly, I just think it's the best route to go. It, it's the centerpiece of this parish, in my opinion.
Yeah, the courthouse.
I know y'all get phone calls just like I do, okay? So, that is what came back with, Mr. Armstead, if this should have gone under building the properties, I apologize to you. I, I did get a quote today from Allen's Tree Service on some deadwoods on the, the oak trees that are at the courthouse. I'll bring that to the finance committee, but I just wanted to go ahead and put that out there, as well as fertilize. We normally fertilize every year, every other year, and they do that during the winter. But obviously, the severe drought that we've had takes a toll on those trees.
You're concerned about the courthouse, very concerned.
So, so I have one question for, I thought we, a while back under the last parish manager, that we, that we put a new sprinkler system, did we or did we not?
No, sir.
No. We just worked on it, we didn't put no new one.
He had some work done to it, is that correct?
So, we set aside a certain amount of money and I tried to get a particular firm involved and they kept giving me the runaround, the runaround, so I finally got in touch with a civil firm that would take, to see, just to get a starting point, right, to see where, where we need to start with. And so, that's kind of where we're at and I just kind of want to give y'all an update of what it is.
I want to thank Mr. Beal, he could fire truck and water the courthouse ground because the system wasn't working in the ground. It was dying.
So, right now, we have somebody going up there three days a week with sprinklers.
Sprinklers.
And rotating them to, to keep the water, obviously, you don't need it today, but Allen's been nice enough to get that done.
Every bit of water out of that long tube.
So, who we been having to do the sprinklers, have we been having to pay those or what?
No, sir, we hadn't had to pay anybody.
Okay.
No, sir, we hadn't had to pay anybody, not one dime.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
When, I have one question, when they fertilize it, are they gonna reseed the grass that's dead out there too?
Uh, the fertilizer is, is, it's a liquid injection that goes to the trees, I don't think you can do that to grass, but I can ask. I mean, we could get, we could, we could, honestly, we could get some fertilizer and, and go over the, the grass, you know.
Could it drive, could it?
It's dry.
Thank y'all.
I thank you, Mr. Williams. Okay, Ms. Harris. Any, any other department here? If you can't speak, you got a voice that can speak for you, Ms. Harris. Yeah, take a tone. He will be his voice, Mr. Beal, Mr. Kelly. Hopefully, you all can hear me, Derek Hill, Director, Department of Public Works. We've been applying for a grant. We've been in touch with Ms. Bria, Bria Hicks, to try to get some funding for the repair of two bridges. Speck Garrett Bridge and Hepsaba Bridge. We got the scope of work, it's, it's a little older, so we got to get a current, updated, a current updated estimate on the cost of Speck Garrett. We also have a current estimate on the repair and the timeframe, it would take to redo the bridge, it would take at least twenty-one days. The amount is, that they quoted us for, is, where is it, Richard? It's right at a hundred and sixteen thousand, which is not a bad price, but I'm gonna get another quote because for material, equipment, manpower, that's about the exact same thing that it would take for us to do the job as well. But they would do it pretty much like.
It would twenty-one days.
And which bridge was that?
Speck Garrett.
Speck Garrett?
Yes, sir. They say they can have it completed in twenty-one days. Hepsaba Bridge, I'm waiting for them to set me a schedule up, supposed to be this week, about coming to get us a new, new quote for it. We have some, we have a formal resolution that they sent us because we weren't for sure if you all had to approve anything for us to start the grant process, which she's informed us that we did. And we also have the, what it is, the letters. Oh, no, no. We, we also have some recommendation letters of, from certain organizations and residents on the concern and the benefits that it would be to have Speck Garrett Bridge and Hepsaba Bridge repaired. But as of right now, we still in the process of getting more material, trying to meet the deadline and get the grant approval for those two bridges. I want to commend you, Mr. Harris, Mr. Mr. Hill, first of all, did you, we should be reactive here, but now we being more proactive, now I'm gonna thank you for being proactive, because we need those bridges back in place.
Yes, sir.
Got a lot of complaints about those bridges.
Yes, sir.
And once the bridge out, the road goes.
Yes, sir.
The road is all grown up, so I'm gonna thank you.
And if I could just answer what Mr. Hill said, we're trying, you know, we've been working with Latticorp. And I did get an update on the last grant that you all applied for, the safety street grants. They needed some more information, then we were able to give back to them the same day, so we're waiting to see if we will receive that grant. But there was no cost to the jury, we were able to get, there was a cost share. The Latticorp and the governor's office helped with the, the, the cost share. And with this grant, Mr. Mr. Hill just told you about, we are working so that jury won't have to pay anything even for, for that. And we tried to be, we tried with choosing during this time what we were able to get done in that timeframe and frame and would be at this time best for the jury with having to have a cost share. So, we are working on getting grants and funding to the best of our ability.
Anything, anything else, Mr. Hill? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Ms. Harris? Any question for Ms. Harris? I think we just move on, thank you. Homeless security, Mr. Darrell Beal.
I just a few things on there. We put nine thousand gallons on the courthouse where we watered it the other day. And right now, this rain we got, probably in a week it'll be gone, so we're gonna have to keep the water going until we get sufficient amount of rain because what little bit we got up here, you can still go out and kick dust on it, so.
Excuse me, Darrell, I think Mr. Williams said they've got sprinklers hooked up on it.
I didn't know what it, I started spraying them, I just.
It ain't, it ain't close.
Drop in the bucket.
Yeah, because we went out there last Tuesday to spray it, hey, it was, it was dust that was on it. So, at least once a week, we're gonna help spray it, but at the sprinklers, you're gonna have to run them twelve hours a day for a solid week to even try and get a base on it. Because the live oats, if you look on all four corners, because of the asphalt that's around it, those four trees are the one that's suffering the most.
No water, they don't, they keep.
Yeah, the asphalt, no water can get to the trees, so it's only on the one side, right there on it. But yeah, it's gonna take a lot of water, because if you look at them right now, hey, they're, they're hurting real bad on, especially them oats. The grass is all dead, there's no, all the green grass anywhere on it, especially the west side.
You were, Mr. Williams, one together with them?
Yeah. Yeah, well, I didn't know they were putting water faucets out.
Yeah.
Right. We're having to rebid the RFP for the debris removal, because we got with HGA on it and he said, to save it from going to court. He said we would be better off to rebid it, so we're gonna start this week on the process of getting that to rebid on it. The RFQ for the generators, we're meeting Wednesday to open bids on those. And in addition to that, we might have a grant that we won't be able to match to meet the deadline on, and that's the ELC, roof repair and hurricane-proof windows and doors. So, we're working on right now to have some more generators put in, to do a heating and cooling shelters for the parish. The library has offered us to use theirs, they will run it, because, I mean, hey, we talked about it a year ago when we was doing this project, but it was too late to add them, so we started doing some of the work. So, now it looked like it might come through, if we do, we'll be doing the library and the Council on Agent in Jackson, and that'd give us two more centers for the parish. Because that's the big push for right now is heating and cooling centers for people to go to that don't have it during a hurricane, getting overheated, they can go there, cool down. We still looking for one K, eighty KW generator, I got with the sheriff's office, hey, we filed a complaint, they gonna put a detective on it to see if they can go around and look and find. We already looked at some spots right now and the generators were not there. We have the serial numbers for them and everything. Once, if they can find it, good, if not, we're gonna start looking everywhere else we can think of. But we still have one that, it's a diesel generator, the eighty KW.
Where did it come up missing from?
Uh, DPW. Hey, that, we had a, we actually had to go to two thousand and nine and get a picture of them where they were still underneath the shed waiting to be put in. So, we have no record of anything we can find. And to find the serial numbers, we had to go to the state. The state actually sent us a copy of the generators that were underneath the shed, right behind the old, oh, office, right there, because we looked at it and said, hey, I know where that shed is. And we had already looked all through there and the three of them that we had already were all Generac. And turned out, these two were interstate, uh, state line, and they were diesel generators with a hundred gallon tanks.
So, how long have these been missing? I just, because it's my first time.
That is why we're doing assets, hey, every two years right now, Sean knows, hey, hey, because we have pictures of it, we gonna have a GPS. So, we'll know, if we say this is at this spot right here, you go to GPS, you walk up there, that's where the generator should be. So, every two years, we'll know exactly where everything is.
Anything else, Mr. Beal?
And that's gonna be it.
We are sure where it is, if it's, if someone, if it's just missing, we don't know if it was replaced, we don't, at this point, just.
No record of it.
For the records.
That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Beal. Okay, commission and board report, standing on, I got a recommendation approved. A through I, but we'll come back and vote on B definitely, okay?
Okay, B?
Yeah, B.
I'll make a recommendation to approve A through I minus B.
Second, okay.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dexter Armstead?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Chastain? Mr. Michael Cheatham is absent. Mr. Kyle Flanagan?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jason McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Keith Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Oliver? Dr. Chrissy Oakwin?
Yes.
President Kent?
Yes. Motion papers. Now we're coming back to B, recommend approval for K-HO LLC. You know, motion to approve. Motion.
My second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Mr. Dexter Armstead?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Chastain?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Cheatham is absent. Mr. Kyle Flanagan?
Abstain.
Mr. Jason McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Keith Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Oliver?
Yes.
Dr. Chrissy Oakwin?
Yes.
President Lewis Kent?
Yes. Motion care. Okay, move on, public comment, you're coming for the public. State your name, please.
Fred I, Assistant Chief of Clinton Fire Department. I just had a question about nine fifty-five, so Highway ten is probably Mr. Hill. The road is closed on Highway nine fifty-five, yep, for the next four or five days, five days. What's it closed for?
Bridge repair.
Yes.
The bridge repair.
There's a bridge repair there, okay.
Yeah, that's a state doing it.
A state.
Oh, yes, that's, okay, all right, well, I appreciate that. Uh, so, when that happens, then do you all get notified?
Nine one one gets notified.
Who does?
Nine one one.
We called nine one one, they, they weren't aware of it.
It was in the newspaper, it was on the news.
Yeah, it's been advertised.
Yeah, they advertise, they advertise on the road.
It was on the news, in the newspaper, I read it.
And it also advertises on the roads too, they been having a date saying it was gonna be closed.
Absolutely, the issue is, is that it cuts off part of Clinton's response, right? So, I can't bring it all the way around, we gotta go ahead and coordinate it with the Ethel Fire Department. So, I was just wondering whether or not nine one one gets alerted and.
Dispatch was fine out of it, but it went, they, they send one every time, they go about state to us.
Okay, good deal, well, we'll.
As well.
Okay. Uh, we'll make arrangements with, with Ethel to cover our piece, but I wanted to just find out what the process was for the outlet, okay?
And anyone who's registered, like Ms. Rachel said, to receive notifications from, um, D O T D.
Okay, sounds good, thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Yes, it's your turn, yes, sir. State your name, please.
I got a question about Lemon B Road.
State your name, please.
I'm Gladrey.
Yes, state your name, please.
Sir?
State your name.
I can't hear anymore.
State your name. State your name.
My name is Michael Tracy, I live on Lemon B Road, last forty years, and I don't know how many times I've been up here. But, I called the other day and you said you were gonna get somebody from the state.
No, I said I'm gonna talk to our DPW, and he's right here, and I told him all the problems, and I'm gonna let it all roll down, he can explain to you.
So, you're gonna ladder, lateral, get to them?
Get your kid down a little.
I can't tell them what to do, I can tell them the problems, but I'm not their boss, so he can explain to you what's being done.
so he can explain to you what's being done.
Where is he?
Right there.
It's Rachel.
All right, what we got to do is it's becoming, it's getting dangerous, I pulled a couple kids out of the ditch the other day, but when you're coming off four twelve on Lemon B, you familiar with it?
It's dangerous.
Also, the water coming across Highway four twelve from the north side back is eating out Lemon B Road.
It's a big old cup.
All you have to do is divert some of that water away.
I think it's working on Highway four twelve, that's the state highway.
That's what I'm trying to tell you, you gotta get somebody else involved, you need to do it, because that road is getting eaten away, and it's becoming, it's got.
Then, then, then a resident, you will have to call the O T D, and let go, let go request with him to work on Highway four twelve. Uh, that's, that doesn't interfere with the parish, we not allowed to work on the state.
Aside from that issue, there are other issues that he is aware of, and they are going to address them. I let him know a cover needs to be replaced, it's gotta be graded, I, I go through this.
The road, the ditches keep getting bigger and deeper, the road keeps getting narrower and getting narrower.
They had, um, when was it, initially, that the engineers came out, and I told something was gonna be done, and I heard nothing.
Yes, um, just a couple more ago, we did go out with Fort Tablada, um, Mr. Hill, myself, and we had someone from Fort Tablada to come out, that was during the time of the RFP, where Fort Tablada was doing, you know, helping the, the police jury out there, or not actually the engineers. And like I mentioned not long ago, um, the thirteenth is the deadline for to, to have engineers for them to, to submit, um, any kind of package if they're interested in being engineers. So, Fort Tablada are helping out, if requesting, um, the jury with anything that needs to be done, but right now, you do not have parish engineers. So, um, Mr. Hill, he was there, and I'm sure he understood more of the, the things that they recommend that we do do, but it will be a cost to the parish. So, we have, we did go out, and we are trying to, I know I saw you here before, but we have not forgot about you, um.
Yeah, I'm kidding. I don't believe you.
You don't believe that we came out?
I don't believe that you haven't forgotten about.
Oh. But, I mean, if there's anything else that you think, that you would like to add, Mr. Hill, to give a, a favor, kind of like.
My thing about it is, what we come out and feel like we're in, we're, you know, we used to.
We're spinning in the wind, we have to get engineer, it's gotta be fixed here.
Give us a full project, or what it's gonna take to.
What I don't understand is, because the state road, four twelve is, you can't do nothing about it. Is that right?
We can't, can't work on.
What?
We can't work on that road.
No, you don't need to work on that road, you need to put a weir on the south side of Highway four twelve to slow down the water so it doesn't eat out. It's, it's pretty simple.
A big old, big old box cover.
And then you go to state, and you get a, we'd say, what?
I'd say with a big old box covered on four twelve, that water just come like a river, just wash the road out.
Then you go to, after you get the weir put up, slow the water down, you, you need to divert some of the water that's coming off four twelve and put it somewhere else, there's plenty of places to put it, 'cause that's what's washing the water, uh, road away. I thank y'all for your time, I know this is old and repetitive, but y'all come back and see us, we're great.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can we possibly get somebody in this office, all over state, I know they've done it.
Right, right.
Well, that's trying to call a game, if you need to have a call every time, or, you know, maybe they'll get out this side of here, not just this man.
I get our representative, I get Darrell and Boy.
I already know that, I can do the attitude, you know, we have, uh, somebody from here.
Yeah.
We ha- we, we have, and we, we will continue, but also, the, like, uh, Mr. Frosty said, the re- the residents, like, they come in and, you know, kinda like, reach out, it would, it would, to your chance to get.
Any more public comment? State your name, please.
Trevor Collins, Audubon Regional Library. I, I won't take but a few moments of your time. I was speaking with Dr. Oakland about a week ago, and telling her about some of the things we have going on at the library, and she thought it would be a good idea for me to come and give you all an update, so I'm here to do that. Uh, just wanted to tell you, we had a, a, a good, uh, successful summer reading, but after that, uh, and throughout summer reading, we did a, an initiative where we, we give out food to kids, uh, and it's no cost to the people of this parish or, or any of the children. It's a, it's a partnership through the Greater Baton Rouge Food Bank and the U.S. Department of Agriculture. We gave over fifty-two thousand, uh, away, uh, in the period that we did it, Meals to Kids, so that's fifty-two thousand full bellies, uh, over the course of the summer. Um, I also wanted to tell you, we've just started recently circulating Hot Spots, which is, um, if, if, for those not familiar, that's internet that you can take home with you. Uh, I know we're, we're, we're getting better fiber access, uh, in, in this parish and secondly in the parish, but we're not there yet, so you can come and check out Hot Spots from the library now. We're also, uh, through a, a grant with ADA, we're now circulating, um, blood pressure monitoring kits, we have those kiosks, so if you have or know anyone who has, uh, blood pressure issues, you can come to the library, check those out for a week. And, um, we're about to start, um, circulating, uh, through the, a partnership with the state library, a museum, uh, state museum pass that'll, and, and park pass that'll allow you, at no cost to you, uh, to come and, uh, get a ticket to any park, uh, any state park in the state, and also some museums, like the World War Two Museum in New Orleans, for example, and, um, go and, go and visit those. Lastly, just, just a few moments, uh, our, our project over here across the street is coming along, hopefully, it'll be done in about a month, uh, and you're, you're all welcome, uh, certainly invited to come when we do the, the groundbreaking, um, I'm sorry, the, the opening for it, and, and everyone who's watching, we'd, we'd love to have you, but it, it should be a nice playground and a new parking lot over there. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Appreciate it.
I thought y'all needed to know that it's not just about books.
It isn't, it isn't just about books.
Any more public comment?
I've got a question, maybe I didn't understand y'all, do we not have an engineer right now? On contract or on retirement?
No, we don't. We don't have one.
We don't?
No, no, we don't.
What happened, I thought, maybe I'm remembering wrong, I thought y'all had recently approved Fort Tablada.
They stand the terrace, what happened?
So, we had to rescind the motion because the advertiser that was done was for.
Or, um, it would cover roads, bridges, however, it would not cover hazard mitigation projects. So, our administrators said that we needed to rebid it out to make sure everything would be covered.
Okay, so right now, when y'all need an engineer, are y'all still, how are y'all doing that? Case by case, or?
Well, we spoke with Fort Tablada, and they've been helpful, they did come to the meeting as well, a meeting, and say that they're willing to help out in whatever way they can, but we're looking to get that taken care of soon.
Okay, like, I just, I thought, thank y'all.
Any more public comment? State your name, please.
John Ruschon with the coroner's office, I just wanted to publicly thank Mr. Frosty for getting our vehicle back online. This weekend, the battery went click, click, and we needed it to go to sixty-one for traffic fatality, and we also had, uh, Mr. Cheatham's wife passed away, I wound up going in our personal vehicles, but, uh, it's back online now, so this afternoon, come pick it up and went out to, uh, nine fifty-nine, or nine fifty-eight for a death. So, anyway, thanks, Frosty.
Any more public comment? If not attended, more should you. All the favor?